Yeah. You can come up here, come up. Yeah.
Good evening.
Hello.
Deacon, what's going on? Nathan, you're filling up my screen. That's because I'm larger than life. Hi all, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm sorry I had difficulty connecting.
Jeff, you didn't miss a single thing.
I was concerned you wouldn't let me in five times.
Hi all, it doesn't look like we have a quorum yet.
Hi Miriam, how are you?
Hi Jeff, I'm good.
Good to hear, good to hear your voice.
Hi everybody else.
Hi, I wanted to mention something, Miriam. I know that you, this is off of the official planning board, whatever.
Go for it.
I know that you were hit with the electricity, hit with an electrical storm. And it blew out your panels. I wanted to say that we had panels put in and they put in a whole home surge protect, surge protector. So you can get those. We got it at electrical supply place in, in, in Northampton. And we had someone put it in, but I don't know whether that would be of interest to you.
I should look into it.
Yeah.
We got it all covered under our homeowner's insurance.
Right, but you can get a whole home.
Oh, it's a good idea. I thought there was, I thought we had that, actually.
And you might. I don't know. But we have one now that's plugged in and.
It's a good idea to have one.
And I will, I will get the name of it. I'll sign up for a second, get the name of it and tell you.
Yeah, or email, Jeff, you can email me.
Okay, I don't know if I have your email, but do you want to tell me your email over the line?
Yes, no, it's fine. M. Defant, you know how to spell it.
It's D E F A N T.
Yes. Dot shootsberry at gmail dot com. Jeff and I go way back. He was with me when I was in labor with my third child. He knew I was in labor before I knew I was in labor, as a matter of fact. If I recall that story.
Miriam, I don't know if you want to share that with everybody.
I didn't know I was in labor.
So anyway, I will mail you that information. I think it costs like eighty nine dollars, but it has to be put in properly.
Yeah, of course. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Bye.
Well, hi all, can you hear me?
You can.
All right. I hate to interrupt this conversation, but I'll call the meeting to order now that we have a quorum.
This might be a really short meeting.
I hope so. I'm looking forward to that exactly.
Me too.
So it, it doesn't look like, like we have public comment. Or landowner education and guidance.
I've got a comment I would like to make.
Please, please.
Which is, the comment is simply stating that the last two meetings of the planning board, I was not in attendance at because the sole agenda items on the meeting were to be held in executive session and dealing with subject matter that I would tend to not participate in so to avoid a conflict of interest with my employer per the code of conduct that I have with my employer. That's all.
Okay, I'll just say, Nathan, if you ever need anyone to verify that you've done everything by the book with the I's dotted and T's crossed, I'll.
Well, I'm actually, I'm actually saying that for the public, not to my employer.
Okay, anyway, I just, you're, you're just on top of it. I appreciate it.
Yeah, no, I mean, you know, I just don't want people to think that I'm, you know, skipping out on meetings woolly-nelly. It's I mean, I could have probably showed up and said that and then left before executive session started, but I'm saying it now and that's, that's it. Just, just, just making a note for the record.
All right. Well, so will we go to the minutes?
Please.
Okay. One, three, twenty-three?
Twenty-three or three?
I, I, I think, I think it's one, three.
So I didn't send any of those out because none of those have been reviewed by you or Michael.
Oh, oh, okay.
We never went through and edited them.
Oh, okay.
That's why I forwarded them to you.
That's convenient.
Thank you. Well, in that case.
Well, we can make a date.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's do that. Exactly.
Cool, okay.
What's good?
I'll be there tomorrow and Thursday. Tomorrow I plan to be there from ten to two. And then on Thursday, I plan to be there to ten to three. And if I remember correctly, I believe Miriam's meeting me at one o'clock to do more organizing.
Okay, let me, I have to just check which ones I've read. So how about I'll, I'll do that after and then I can email you guys. Deacon, do you care either this week or we could do next week too, right? If we have anything to read? Okay.
Deacon, if.
I'm game for whatever. Okay. How about I'll look and see and I'll write the email you guys and just pitch a date.
That sounds good.
And, and Carrie, if it's not this Tuesday and Thursday, it's next Tuesday and Thursday also?
Yeah, that's fine. I plan to be there from ten to three from, from here on out unless I don't have anything to do, but I've been doing organizing, so.
Great.
On both days, ten to three?
Yes.
Going forward?
Yes, except for this upcoming Tuesday. I have to leave it because I have to go to my other job, unfortunately.
Okay.
Carrie, this is Miriam. I've got us down for the sixteenth.
Okay, so not this Thursday, but the next Thursday?
No, it's a Tuesday.
Oh, I don't know. I thought it was Thursday. Okay.
Yeah.
So the, it's the ninth and the eleventh. And then the sixteenth and the eighteenth. Cool, okay.
Unlike maybe there's a conflict with Miriam on the sixteenth.
Yeah, on the sixteenth, she'll be coming in at one o'clock to help me some organize some larger binders that we've been working on.
Okay, so we, so we would do ten to one if we needed to on the sixteenth.
Yes.
Cool, okay, that's perfect.
Perfect. So, so, so I'll just expect an email.
Yes, I will send one.
Great. I, I do want to say, Carrie, that I was, I was glad to see you're sending out the sending out the Whitman stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, he actually, I don't know if you had seen the recent email. He had sent something, an email regarding registry of deeds. I'm assuming he is correct that he needs to put in his registry of deeds and then we received like a copy that it was placed in there, but I didn't want to answer until.
He does need to take it to the registry of deeds.
Yeah, that, that's what I thought, but I, I want to make sure that that was correct.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, yeah. He's, he's absolutely right on that.
Okay, I'll let him know then after the meeting.
Yeah. Well, well, the next item on the agenda is the letter to the AG. And Michael and I went to the select board and had an easy time.
And they sent it out.
Made easier, I think, by the fact that it, it was largely unread by the select board.
It was one-third read.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, they put it in the mail. I, so well, I was just thinking about this morning. Well, we'll find out when we find out, I guess.
Yeah, yeah. Did you, did you send it certified?
Certified receipt requested. We want to make sure that someone on the receiving end actually gets, is on the hook for letting us know that they got it.
Right.
So, and actually, Carrie, I don't know if you want to, I think it's Geneva who sent it out. So maybe if you're in town hall tomorrow, you can see if they got the return receipt thing.
Okay, yeah, I can check with her.
Great.
I, I would note that I, I got an email from the reminder, asking for information about it. I haven't done anything at this point. I'm thinking just to send him an email with no comment.
I think that's, that's fine. The one thing I'll say, which was kudos to us and not so much for the select board. We had executive session because that's what Donna recommended. And the select board didn't have it as an executive session. Which I don't know if they could have called it on the fly, but it seemed more important to get them to approve it and send it off in a timely fashion, but.
Well, yes. Well, that was my reaction too. So yeah, you hold on to that letter too long, it's no longer preemptive.
Yeah, it has to be on the agenda that it's executive session.
Yeah, that's what I, that's what my sense was.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I agree. It was, it was better just to go forward, although our cover was blown.
Yes. We'll see what happens.
Any more on that? I mean.
No.
This may set a, this meeting may set a record. So I put down annual town meeting as an agenda item. I mean, there's not much.
Yeah, we have nothing we're presenting. The only thing I would say, which I, it's, it's a little frustrating, I would say, but so our associate member bylaw, if you all remember, we, we know the town passed it a few years ago. And then the AG came back and said that your associate members can only act on special permits. And then we went through this whole process in the last year and a half. And the select board agreed with us that we could go forward on Donna's recommendation, ask the legislators to do legislation. And Jeff and I talked to Joe Coverford's office. And then I in turn communicated with Aaron Saunders and they decided to do a home rule petition. So the way home rules start is they start in the House. Well, first they start with town meeting approving the language. And then once town meeting approves it, it goes to the House to act on it and then goes to the Senate. So I met with Aaron a few months ago when he was doing office hours at the library. And he explained it to me. And basically what he suggested at the time was come up with the language that, you know, Jeff and I had put together and, you know, the planning board had reviewed and the select board had reviewed. Send it to him and he was going to send it to the House of Representatives legal counsel. So that when they got it, it was all the right language so that, you know, we didn't pass something that they didn't like. This was probably in February. He's, you know, as the legislature was sort of gearing up for the new session, he said, I probably won't hear until March. And I've been emailing him about every two or three weeks to find out what the status was because we, we need it in the warrant. At this point, I'm sort of feeling like it won't get in the warrant. But since this is our last scheduled meeting before town meeting, if he comes back in the next, you know, week or so with the language, I think if it makes sense, I would just I don't know, I, I'm guessing he might tell, email me, but either way, I'll go to the select board because they have to make sure it's on the warrant. So either we'll have enough time to put it on the warrant because that's get mailed out at least two weeks ahead of time or we won't. But I think that's the only variable about town meeting. And at this field, at this point in time, I'm sort of feeling pessimistic that we'll get it in time for this one. It's pretty tight. Yeah. So I've been bugging them saying, you know, we need it and we need it because we have to put it in there. So, but if it shows, if it shows up, I'll email everybody just to, you know, give everybody a heads up and then I'll see what the select board wants to do. Yeah, and my guess is we're in the eighth. You know, probably, I don't know. You know, Deacon or Miriam or Carrie, if you know, if they're, the warrants getting finalized and mailed out, but I would guess sometime next week, the end of next week, maybe the latest.
It'll be very, I'm not sure. It's got to be very soon.
Yeah.
I think it has to be finalized this week.
Okay.
Maybe like tomorrow, that the deadline for a submittal an addition would be, I think it was tomorrow, the night.
Okay, okay. So let's presume it's not going to happen.
There you go. There you go. You know, we've exhausted my agenda.
This is cool. I usually love meetings, but this is, this is a nice break.
That's what I thought, that's what I thought as I composed the agenda, that it really wasn't going to take long. Especially for not doing the minutes.
You know, the one thing I'll say, just not to prolong it too long, but since Asher just sort of popped up on the screen. In June, I think, Deacon, we have to, we have to sort of have our joint vote with the select board for associate members. So you might want to just remind the select board that by the end of June, we have to vote to approve them.
I think my term is over in July, July first, I believe.
Yeah, everything, everything's yours.
New year.
Okay, so that makes sense.
Yeah, and I don't know.
It's all new to me.
And I don't know if Jake wants to do it or if we want Jake to do it, but that could be a discussion for June. But actually, I'm assuming you want to keep going.
Yeah, I can do it again. I would like to, yeah.
Yeah.
Good.
I mean.
Thanks.
You'll be very busy.
That's a little worrisome, but yeah.
Because, because you'll be, you're, you're going to be filling in.
Yeah, I know.
Sure.
I'm trying to keep abreast of everything going on. Yeah. Yeah, I know. I mean, I, I have my camera off because I'm usually eating dinner. Or like feeding my son or whatever. So, but I know, you know, when it's real, it, I'll be ready.
Really? Deacon, do you want to check in with Jake in the interim?
Yes, let me, I, I will, I will. He doesn't seem to have been coming of late.
No, I mean, yeah, we could, I mean, I'm sure there's someone else who might be interested. We could just start, we should start finding someone else before we need that person.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, I would entertain, you know, if you know, Jake says, hey, you know, nothing's been going on, so I haven't been showing up. You know, but if something happens, I'm here. But I would still be open to hearing other candidates too, to bring other people into the fray if there's interest.
Well, I'll definitely check with him because well, i- i- if he says, well, I think we should hold in reserve the possibility that we may need another meeting.
Right. So should we try and get like a, an announce going or something like that?
I think we missed that one. I mean, oh, we can do an email one, but not the new, not the hard copy with the warrant. But yes, yeah, 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 for the town announce. Yes, it's a good idea. So do we have? Well, how about, let, let Dee can check in with him and then we.
We got to check with him first and, and.
Just so he's not caught unawares, even if we're entertaining other people, we should just check in with them first.
Yes, yes. Okay.
We've got time.
Yeah.
Can I ask a question?
Please.
Is there, I don't remember because it's been so long. Is there anything that I need to do besides like get my paperwork in? Once I'm appointed, is there anything I have to do beforehand?
You have to, the clerk has, well, I don't know. We've never done this before.
Yeah.
I think there probably some, we probably need to get a little advice about exactly how to handle your role.
I can reach out to Grace.
I don't think there's anything to do. I could, it's really.
Grace administer like an oath or anything like that or?
Yeah, I did an oath. Yeah. And then I, you know, I had to do the conflict of interest and open meeting.
Yeah, so, so.
But that's afterwards.
That's after I was appointed, yeah.
Yeah, you, you know, there'll be a vote to reappoint you and then you get, you just go through the same rigmarole that you already went through before. Just do it again as if.
I'll try to do it earlier on this time.
You know, yeah, yeah. Obviously you got to do, you know, what needs to be done, you know, but it's.
But actually in advance, all, I mean, this meeting really serves as your statement of interest to the planning board. So, you know, when we, when we schedule the meeting, that's the joint meeting, we'll know that, you know, your name for forward. I don't think we need a statement from you because you've already been serving this capacity. So, you know, people want to look back. Yeah.
So I tried.
You really have a good time dealing with the court case.
Yeah, it's something. Yeah. Yeah, not surprising though, right? I mean.
No, they promised this at the very get-go.
Yeah.
That was the first thing they said when.
Well, oh, I will say, just on the before, on that note. Uh, so the way the complaint works, this, this is not executive session stuff, but the way the complaint works is the plaintiff. So Cole is an amp. They send in the thing that we all read, you know, so that's the plaintiff's side of the complaint. And then Donna representing the town writes the defendant's side of it. So our whole set of arguments and Donna consulted me, maybe it was two weeks ago, like right before the deadline. She, she used the AG's letter as a, as a sort of starting point and she asked us some questions about stuff. And she submitted that probably, I don't want to say like ten days ago, ten week, or two weeks ago. So it's, it's in the legal hopper somewhere. I, I would presume it's a public record, but I don't know that for sure. But that, our, the town side of the complaint got fulfilled with Donna a few weeks ago. So and I, she told me that they had some preliminary meeting with the judge. I don't know. It's, you know, it's more logistical. There's no like substantive decision-making. So.
But that has already happened.
Yeah, yeah. So the wheels have started, but I think Donna told me they were looking for a very prompt, quick turnaround dates and Donna was suggesting not that. But I don't have any more detail of them.
So there was, so there was, was there anything settled about dates?
Um, I don't, I don't know. I haven't talked to Donna since. She just, it was a quick email to let me know that. I don't even know why she was emailing me to tell you the truth, but in the email, she said that they had, they had the meeting about dates. And both parties made their arguments and I don't think the judge made a decision yet.
And so that was a virtual meeting for her?
Uh, I don't know, actually. She knows the judge, you know, I'm su- I'm assuming she knows all of these judges from her years of doing this, but I don't know where the judge is located, probably in Boston. I guess that's probably a good assumption.
Well, I think, well, the well, the complaint was filed in, in for Boston.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is that, is that letter? Let's call it the calls amp letter. Is that public record?
Um, well, the, the first part of the complaint is public because I think Donna had said it was a public record. I'm, I'm assuming, although I haven't asked anybody if the completed part, the plaintiff and the defendant's side is public. I think it's easy enough to just, you know, contact Grace and confirm. But I would hope it is, only because the plaintiff's is, it's a one-sided document. If you only read that, the first one.
Right, right.
And I got to say, based on the conversation with Donna, if they use the, the stuff in the AG's letter, it definitely evens out the playing field, not tilts it in our direction. Might. So if anyone wants to find out, that would be great.
Wow.
One motion to adjourn, Deacon.
I think that it's a wonderful idea and, and we can all be very happy and take a nice break.
Cool. I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
So that was Robert. Discussion. Yeah, I think we should really seriously take some time to discuss this. Because otherwise it could be a record for the, a record, a short, or shortest meeting ever.
For twenty-four minutes. How long do you think we should go, Stephen?
I, well, twenty-four minutes is the shortest I can ever recall.
And it's, it's hard to do something, anything under an hour.
I, oh, it's twenty-five minutes now, so I think we're good now.
Are we going to call it a twenty-five?
Yeah. Okay, so anybody besides Steve was, with.
I just think we have to let Jeff know that he missed the shortest meeting.
And, and wait, there, there may be a cause.
Do we need to vote on that?
Wait, maybe, let me go on the record. There may be a cause and effect that this meeting is so short and Jeff's not here.
Well, that's cruel.
Okay, so.
So, so I'll, I'll call the roll. Jeff Weston?
Aye.
Steve Bressler?
Aye.
Michael DeCara?
Aye.
Robert Raymond?
Aye.
Nathan Murphy?
Aye.
I'm an I. I think I got everybody.
Cool. See you around the neighborhood.
See ya.
Right.
Come on.
Thank you all.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.